If not, call for a motion that we approve these minutes.
So moved.
Made by Coivinon, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D, approval of agenda. There's a couple things on there I would like to maybe not act on. Number one, the library board, I know Jackie, you talked about something we should be maybe look at revamping, what their purpose is.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, because right now after last charter change, you're kind of in limbo with the board actually can do. And about appointment to the Evolus Virginia Airport Authority, I think we'll hold off until we get another member, we can suppose squeeze in there, one of us. Because I'm on there and whoever.
Well, so there may be, okay, so if you can't make it, then you and Bradley are on it. And in your guys' absence, Joe could go.
Yeah.
And then Tim's absent, it could be Jerry. So if we just get a couple, two people that are remaining at a meeting, we should get.
You're not going to be doing that too many times.
Yeah, no, right, so we're good until you have some.
Those were my changes for the meeting tonight, does anybody else have any? If not, I'll call for a motion that we approve tonight's agenda with those changes.
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support?
Support.
Support by Coivinon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both motion carried, under appointments. Just jump to number two, reappoint Matt Heady to the planning commission. Call for a motion that we reappoint Matt.
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number three, reappoint Lance Omerza to the Joint ATV OHM snowmobile trail board.
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? Is there much of a board there anymore?
Well, I have talked to Jim the administrator Gilbert, so, but no, there isn't. They haven't had that much urgent action, but he's trying to figure out how we can like, we can figure it, make it functional work. But for the time being, the insurance has been paid, that's probably the most important, and there's some maintenance being done, so we're in contact.
Does that have to be upgraded somehow maybe, or is it the same as it always did? Because it looks like we got a one man show here with Lance, you know?
I don't know.
I don't know how much he could do, just like.
I'll talk, I'll talk.
Maybe some, maybe some, talk to Lance a little bit. But I'm really, I'm going to reappoint him, but you know, he's got nothing to work with too, it's hard, you know, unless we maybe make some changes.
I'll call Gilbert.
It's like the library board too, we changed the airport commission and public safety, or police and fire. Maybe you have to upgrade some of those so these people who serve on there can, can actually do something. If no one else has any questions, call for a motion that we reappoint Lance to that, that board.
Do you have a motion already?
Oh, do you have a support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Right now, we usually take a few minutes for anyone from the audience who'd like to make a presentation to the city council. We kind of limit it to five minutes, but we allow time after the meeting. Does anyone like to address the city council at this point? Just step up to the mic and introduce yourselves and we'll give you a little airtime for free TV.
Can I take this off to talk?
Yeah.
Awesome, thanks, good to see you by the way, in person, so I feel like I need your autograph, pretty famous. My name's Nathan Chalice, I'm with the past senior pastor at Woodlands Bible Church here in Evolus. And just want to give you guys an update on the food drive that we do every year. It's been going on for longer than I've been here, but since Woodlands has taken part in the distribution of it, I just want to give you guys an up, up, kind of an update on this. I do have some financial records, because we do have donations from the city that people give to. So I'd like to present this to you guys to look at if that's all right.
Okay, can you just give that to administrator there?
Perfect, yeah, for sure. It's been really good, we, since I've been here, 2017, we took it on. We've been able to help, back then it was 42 people that come in and they submit their names. Back then, it was like all over the range, well, since we came in and money was kind of limited, we just centralized it just here to Evolus, and that seemed to work pretty good. But we, we actually, in 2018, we dropped half, we dropped from 42 people down to 20. But we also had a lot of donations come in, just in the city here, we had $900 in donations that came in for that. And then we kind of run into a little snag, and that's what I'm trying to figure out and wrap my mind around, because we have a lot of people that give a lot of time and work towards this, but we're not getting, getting the information out to the people in like the utility bills, that's been kind of a challenge here as of recent. And we've seen a decline in donations because of it, and it's, we have enough buffer to where if we didn't get anything next year, we could still put it on. But we just need to figure out what we can do to make this thing running on all four cylinders like we had it back in 2017. And so we're looking really, we got the Evolus Fire Department's really helping out a ton, they go around and pick up all the food, and then they bring it to us, we pack the boxes and distribute it, and then the people come and pick it up through us. We introduced giving a message of hope that we do right around Christmas time is when we do this. And I've actually gotten really good feedback from that, especially this year, because let's just be honest, this year's been hard on every single person. And I got overwhelming, I mean, just the 18 people that came through, the majority of them were thankful just to hear a message of hope and the gospel and the Lord Jesus Christ and Him being alive and conquering death amidst a year where that's kind of, all that's been talked about is death. And so very overwhelming positivity on that. So really, I'm just looking, the distribution is going very well even amidst the COVID crisis we're in, but I'm just trying to figure out how we can get that into the flyer, the utility bills, both in November and December of this year, to where we can have that running really good like we had it two years ago.
Is that something that can go on a city website or?
So, Mary, also, I did talk to the pastor, and every year for, I've watched track of him here doing this a long time, that the fire department works with me, I get the flyer ready to go, it gets printed, it gets the utility bills, but the, I didn't get it. I didn't get it for the utility bill. And it was, by the time I got the call from the pastor, and I don't remember if I talked to you or not, Angie, but they were stuffed already, and so we can't, we're not going to stuff, so that's the hangup. So maybe it's going to be earlier, I think we talked about the timing of that, because we've been participated for, I think it's 2011 it feels like, for a long time. So all it is about is get your stuff here and I'll make it happen, you just need to get here in plenty of time before the bills can stop, so.
Excellent.
Like we've done in the past.
Yeah, okay, well, that's great, I got, what I did, I kind of been proactive, because I don't want to see this thing stop, because a lot of people can use it. I went ahead and printed off the flyer for this year, as well as the verbiage, and put it on a USB port, if that would work. And if there's anything, we got plenty of time from now till December, but if we can get that out in November and December, because we don't, we don't stop getting names for boxes until the 15th of this year, December 15th, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're looking forward to a great year, and Fire Chief Pearson was supposed to be here too. Our guy was supposed to be here, so, anyway, I'll just get this to you and I'll be done.
Well, whatever we can do to help you out, I'm glad we got a lot of time, usually you're under the gun, you know?
And I will say for the record, we actually met with the fire hall like February of last year, but then COVID hit, and even though we were so prepared, it was just like, I don't know, last year was terrible.
Where do you distribute the food from, the church there?
Right from the church, yep, and we got a great way where they come in and they never even pass each other going out.
Well, you got the traffic control.
Exactly.
Is it out there, okay.
Got this thing all running on all four cylinders, so it's, we're ready to go for this year again.
All right.
Thank you.
That sounds good, thank you.
And Angie will be talking to you, let's not forget to touch base.
Thank you.
Yeah, everybody needs some help, needs this day and age. And thank you for everything you guys do for the community. Anyone else would like to address the council at this time? If not, I'll move on to the consent agenda, approval of payroll, January 1st through the 15th, and approval of claims for January. Anybody have any questions on any of the claims? If not, call for a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support?
Support.
Support by Coivinon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have no unfinished business, so we can jump right on to new business. Item number one, resignation letter from Bradley Hadraba from Evolus City Council. Sad to see that happen, Bradley's been with us a long time. If no one has any questions, call for a motion that we accept Bradley's resignation and issue him a letter of thanks for all his years on the council.
Well, with a heavy heart, I will say I will take it, but I just wish him luck. He was very good to work with and we're going to miss him, so all excepted.
I'll support.
Motion made by Coivinon, support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number two, resolution declaring vacancy in the office of city council. Call for a motion, and we have to vote on this twice Jackie?
This meeting and the next meeting.
Okay, call for a motion that we accept this resolution declaring a vacancy?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support?
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number three, I said we'd hold off on that, so we'll just jump to item four. Request from Roller Underground to rent the hippodrome for practice and to possibly host bouts in 2021. Jerry, is that any different from what we usually do, other than with the COVID requirements?
Yeah, no, with the COVID requirements, they would need all those guidelines, and they're just looking for two days a week to practice, possibly some bouts, they're not sure if they're having bouts yet, because they don't know, they've been meeting with the other teams, and they're not sure with COVID that they're going to be doing those. Right now, they want to, they ask, they're asking to rent it from April until August. And April, because Hawking's going a little longer this year into March, so they can't get into the hippodrome, they'll be cleaning up and repaying and do all that and stuff, so it'll be more in April.
They're well aware of that, right?
They're well aware, yep, because they were looking to get in there in March, but I discussed with them. They were okay with that, so they said all we can do in March is hold it.
Well, it's nice to see everybody's flexible with what's going on, you know? Anybody else have any comments or discussion? And if not, I'll grant the request from Roller Underground to rent the hippodrome for practice and possibility host bouts in 2021. Call for a motion that we approve that request?
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Coivinon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number five, resignation of Mike Arrow from the Joint Cable Television Access Board. Mike's been on there a few years, hasn't he?
He's been on there for a long time, I thought, gonna hate to see him go.
I know, that's like to change another guard around here. If not, I'd like to call for a motion that we accept Mike's resignation and also send him a letter of thanks for his years of service.
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support?
Support.
Support by Coivinon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item number six, amendment to the exclusive listing agreement for the city-owned property 701 Hatrick Avenue.
What that is, is you already have a listing agreement for your former Days Inn property, and this broker, he knows a lot more people than we'll ever know. So it expired, and with the whole COVID thing, it got delayed, so we're going to, the question, we extend it starting from November 5th of last year, and keep working it, so we can find some use for it. I think it's, you know, COVID, as we know, upset everybody's counterparts, and some people were starved, so we'll just keep trying.
Is this the same vendor you were going to use for the gravel pit property to list that? Do we have to have a separate agreement for that property?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
He's also listed the property over by the daycare that we sold, and over there.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
We're going to do avenue also, thank you.
If no one has any questions, call for a motion that we approve this listing agreement?
So moved.
Motion made by Coivinon, do you have a support?
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number seven, request for a letter of support for Northeast Minnesota Mine Tour Project.
I will draft a letter of support for you folks if that's appropriate.
What do you guys think, a good project to support?
I'm on board.
I'm definitely on board.
Okay, Jackie, you'll draft the letter and give it to them, okay? And I'll call for a motion that we will send a letter of support to them for this project.
So moved.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support?
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That takes care of new business, does anybody have any, of course, it's a little early in the year. Anything from any commission meetings or?
I got a, I have a meeting at The Rock tomorrow, and they sent me something today, and since I have the three of you here, just want to ask a quick question, since Curlin is not going to be opened up, will they qualify for any of that?
We talked about promos.
Yes.
So I spoke with them, and I don't have my notes prepared.
Yes, they spoke with us, but then they said, so they won't pay the water bill?
I think we do get awarded some money, do you remember Brian and John? I mean, it's been a long time since this morning.
Yeah, like I says, we meet tomorrow, and he told me a little bit about it, that I was reading on my iPad, but I.
I'll have to look.
And they said that.
I didn't bring my list.
They did qualify, so I was just wondering.
Oh, if I told them, I just didn't bring my list. If they qualify, then they got approved today, that takes a while to do the thing.
Okay, because then I could just tell them that the meeting tomorrow.
I didn't tell them, the Kuro Masabi people?
Yes.
Or they should just call.
That's what I kind of told them. I'm stuck in the middle here, so I just want to make sure I have my artillery ready for tomorrow.
They've already received on the first round.
Uh, did they?
Yep. Or excuse me, the second round, February 2nd.
Yep, they just have.
Okay, then they just got approved, and I got this email yesterday, or this afternoon, I don't remember which one it was. I don't check my stuff for a while.
And I talked to them last week over the world, so.
Well, then that's good, then I have nothing.
Brian, you got anything?
Just from the EDA, we had a teleconference again this morning, and we awarded funding for the business grant loan program.
Good.
And we awarded $68,250 to seven businesses. Add that to the $98,000 that we awarded in December of 2020. So the total for that particular program up to date is $166,250 to help 17 businesses, so.
Do we have a total of 250 in there?
Yeah, it's, I think, right around 250.
So I'm glad that people took advantage of it, and that's what it's there for, and I understand a lot of people don't want to, and I can understand that point, but for the people I went through, that's what it's there for.
Exactly.
So good job, guys, and gals.
Excellent, it's a lot of work to put them programs together, like I said, I'd like to thank everybody involved, and hopefully that'll make the difference for some of these businesses.
You know, it's not going to solve their problems, but it'll sure help them, because something is better than nothing, I think we all know that.
And I get the luxury of calling people, and them being really happy about your folks is important, so. I'm sorry, you don't get those calls, but I get to do it, and it feels really good when somebody says, oh, thank you so much, and they're just.
Seeing their lights on and their doors open is probably all we need to see, because it could go the other way, and it's just nice that they stuck it out.
Well, it's nothing like anybody's ever seen before.
Oh, no.
You know, that's, it's really.
They had the depression in the old days, and then, you know, 20 years from now, they'll be talking about the COVID days.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's something that nobody's ever dealt with, and hopefully nobody has to deal with again.
Usually when the economy is, you know, shifting, it's a kind of, it's a gradual decline, you can prepare, but this was shut the door right now.
Yeah.
I mean, who could prepare for anything like that? And that's kind of a slow time, you're trying to get out up to your peak business time of the year, and they were denied that, you know, because of this COVID.
Yep.
It's, it's sad, it's nice to see some cars on a main street again.
Yeah, it, it is.
Brian, you got anything else to add here?
No, sir.
John?
Well, I don't have, I don't have much, I'm going to carry the boys for riding the streets again. We're starting to narrow up, and boy, they come down Hayes and Jackson, and they clean them up nice. For two cars to get passing the night once again, so, doing a good job, that's all I got.
Well, I hear a lot of compliments from the people in town, about the snow removal, it looks like we might dodge Thursdays. That, when I was watching the weather channel, because that's what everybody's mumbling about, they just get stuff cleaned up, and it snows again.
Yep.
There's a lot more snow than I realized.
There is a lot more snow.
Bad enough.
I think that blizzard kind of really made a mess of things with that stuff.
And again, they're doing the same way, a trace to an inch and we get five.
Know what I like, it's all day, it just doesn't.
Starts on Tuesday, ends on Friday.
Oh, man.
I mean, it's good for me, but come on, guys, you know, get kind of close.
Well, I know we, we've been talking about a few things that kind of aggravate us, and I think we're going to get moving and talk to Jackie. We're going to see if we can set up a meeting with the land person from Cliffs, we got some of these leased lots. They got the Lincoln utilities on them, they look like a garbage dump, and they have no respect for those people who lease the lots and take care of them, they're a community asset, but it's enough. Garbage dump, and nobody likes stuff like that, and maybe they should be asked to move if they can't conform. Because we got these people with these common water lines, one doesn't pay, but we're not running another line in. Just take your house and leave, that's kind of what it's coming down to. It's not fair to everybody else who does what they're supposed to, and they got to put up with that, and it's the same, same customers all the time. So that's what we're going to be lining up, a meeting on that. And I got a question for the chief and Mr. Bruntfeld. What can we do in that house on McKinley, what is it, 1,000, what's the address?
Federal court.
We are, we are working on that.
Is that the one where we're going to try to get probate?
Yeah, there's, there's actually two families that we're dealing with, because there were, title wasn't changed back in the day when I signed up for contract for Dean. That contract was paid out, but there's no proof of it, so it's still in the previous owner's name, that owner's now deceased. So we do have the name of the heir to that along with the current owner, and it sounds like they are both willing to discuss and get rid of that property. We know it's an eyesore, we know it's been a problem property, and we're very closely.
So what has to happen there is that essentially, to get the property transferred from the deceased owner into basically that person's living heir, we need, there's a, you know, really normally they would go and do that. So if the deceased owner, if this heir, you know, heirs have gone through and undertaken a probate process or something similar to a probate process, to get the title transferred into their name, then we could go directly to that title holder, and we could, we could just buy a property from them for the purpose of demolishing.
Well.
But the problem is, we, see, the best way to get it is to actually purchase it and then just demolish it, right? And, or acquire a title to it, take it off their hands, and then we can, we can demolish, right?
Well, that, that house looks so bad, to me, it looks like a public health and safety hazard, and what, what's the scenario if we went, told them, kicked the renters out? Somebody's going to surface then, if there's no renters in there. What's the worst thing that could happen, you got to let them back in?
Well, we don't, I mean, we wouldn't have any, I mean, I don't think we would have any legal standing to kick renters out, because we don't own the property.
Well, no, but it's, I think it's a public safety and health hazard, the way it looks, the broken windows and the things in the neighborhood, you know what I mean? And no one seems to care about any of the city's blinders, that is the worst shack in town. And the neighbors have been more than patient, I, I would just like to, it's time to take the gloves off. That house is, I don't know if there's any utilities even on in that house.
Oh, it's closed.
Because I imagine if there's kids there, you don't have any utilities, how can you have any sanitation or cleanliness?
You got green grass.
That, that's my take on it anyway, evict them, then somebody will surface who owns it.
Yeah, and we know who owns it, it's the deceased owner, the owner's deceased, so right now, it would technically.
Somebody's collecting a rent check, or are they just squatting?
They're just squatting.
Well, then can.
All of us just squatting.
Since there is no owner, can't we evict them until they get that cleared up? Because it's a problem in the neighborhood.
I don't think we can, we don't, we wouldn't have any legal standing.
Do they have heat in that house?
They're burning wood in the wood stove in the basement, or what I know of.
Because my, my thoughts, what's the worst case that can happen? You got to let them back in, you know what I mean? It's, it's just awful when you look at that, and I heard some of the people there are not very nice to the neighbors there. And that, that's kind of my take, I don't know, just punk them out of there. Because that place is so bad, and it reflects on who's living in it, and if you got kids in there.
What is our legal right, Mitch, to, I mean, if we don't like it and they're not doing anything?
Yeah, and you.
If you don't have any water going in that place, how do you, sanitation, how do you take care of any waste or anything? I think it's a public health and safety hazard, and to tell those issues are addressed.
I can't say who, but one of the neighbors, they throw five gallon buckets out the front door.
Yeah, because I'll tell you, we've been more than patient, and they're just playing games with us, we're trying to do things the right way, so I think it's time to take the gloves off and be concerned about the people who live in that neighborhood. What's the worst thing that can happen? You just got to undo what we did.
I think we're in two to three years now, probably.
Yeah.
Next, the Lincoln's here, I don't know, Jackie, how, how many years before they found you?
Sorry, I don't know.
Somebody just squatting on a property like that, nobody knows who owns it, I guess maybe we kick them out and secure it, and tell an owner surfaces. And what happens, happens, you know, what's the worst thing? Then we got to undo what we did, but I mean, it's, it's getting just terrible. And I mean, they're the worst, you get a lot of them who play games, but usually they'll do a little bit, fix the property up, clean it up, but this is bad. And I said, we wasted a lot of time of our employees, police department, legal, and like I say, they kind of scare some of the neighbors around there. So you think you could explore their possibilities? Just evict them, nobody's rushing to straighten his title out, that's what gets me, this is like you say, three years we've been dealing with this thing.
We've been dealing with that property, I think, pretty much every year since I've been here, probably before.
I was dealing with it back, I've been retired nine years, so. But I assume that you have a relatively recent long paper trail on that property with regard to blatant health and safety?
We do, and we, we know who's staying there, and like I said, we've been in contact. The only one thing we really haven't done is sat down with the heir, whose name is technically still in with their, with their children.
Because I guess that, I don't know how everybody feels, but that's my take, that's a public health and safety hazard, that place. Especially if, like you say, disposing of waste, the only thing they can do is throw it up in the yard or.
Yeah, and the neighbors don't want to be, they don't want to know who they are, so I can't mention any names of anybody around there.
No.
So, and I don't blame them, but you know, when you're dumping five gallon buckets of, we all know what, that's not right.
That's a step beyond blatant.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I mean, could we consider expediting a sit-down with the heir to try to purchase the property as quickly as possible so we could deal with the issue?
Well, I think we, we might have, if the health conditions are that serious.
They are.
They're actually, they're actually, there's not, there's, you know, there's no sanitary sewer in the house, and that, that is pretty. There might be provisions in the ordinance where we can, you know, we can declare a hazard or not.
Because if you're throwing human waste out in a bucket, those houses aren't that far apart there.
Oh, that's, yeah.
No.
No, I'm pretty sure.
That, that's my concern, you know what I mean?
I mean, if it was, if the, if the, if there were people living in there, but the building was just generally a very dilapidated building and didn't look good, and, you know, but there were people legitimately living in there.
That's a whole other matter.
And had operating utilities.
Yep.
You know, they can, you know, I thought.
You know, they can, you know, I thought, I thought that they were living in there with operating utilities. You know, obviously there was some crime issues going on relative to that, that building and, and, but I just thought they were living there with operating utilities, but the house was dilapidated and there were a lot of police calls that took place there.
Is there electricity?
But now I'm learning something different. I mean, if it's, if it's that serious where there's actually not running utilities.
When's the last time they had running water?
You know.
We're talking a long time no running water.
Is electricity on in that place?
There is electricity.
Is it? Because I, I'm just concerned if you have kids there.
Yeah, because if there's not running, if there's not running sanitary sewer, they're, they don't have any way to dispose the waste, then that is truly, that's an urgent public health situation.
I guess maybe we should contact whoever you got for contact person to tell them that's, if everybody's agreement, that's our intent.
I mean, we had, we had that happen probably about a, maybe it was maybe a decade ago or five to ten years ago with another property that looked at it as a similar type of situation.
Yeah, that was only fourteen, fifteen years ago.
That was a different property, but I.
Yeah, up, up on the hill.
Well, the neighbors have been more than been nice about it, you know, and I think it's time that we should probably do something for the neighbors.
You know, if there's, there's one thing, if somebody's down on their luck and can't afford to fix the house up, but, you know, it's a safe place, the utility's running, that's a whole different situation.
And that's what I thought the situation.
Yeah.
I thought they were living in there, the house was dilapidated, there were police